Okay, well, welcome, everyone. This is the, this is not the first capital planning committee workshop that the town of Rockport has ever had, but it's the first one of this variety and this makeup. So, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and everyone watching on the world wide web. My name's John Duke. For those of you who aren't familiar with me, I'm the town manager. I just came on board in July and we were, I've had this date somewhat circled on my calendar for many months because as I came on board and became comfortable working with the board and came to learn all that's going on in town and where we stand with so many different projects, it became pretty clear that capital planning and the conversations we're going to have tonight are really at the forefront of the next chapter for Rockport. We have a lot of items on this list as this group has seen and people can go on the website and check out what has been put together. When I started, obviously I worked with Megan very closely to figure out where, how does this process work? How can we make this better? How can we find a way to take the needs that I'm seeing in the office, our department heads are seeing, residents are seeing, they're coming to us and saying, they're bringing to the select board, the select board's bringing to me. How do we put this and engage in this process in a different way and perhaps hopefully a more effective way than what we have been able to do? So, what we did was, is a little bit different. We tried to put together the budget committee and members of the capital planning committee, as that committee has existed for many years, and to get everybody in the same room and to talk about these issues and talk about these concerns and allow that conversation to really float back here to the board of select, the select board, old habits, sorry. Let the select board hear those conversations and hear the dialogue that's happening amongst everyone in this room. What I'm presenting all of you with tonight is really a collection of the ideas and concerns raised by department heads. While there's a ranking here, there hasn't been a lot of heavy handling of these requests or heavy handling of the discussions. There hasn't been a deep vetting of funding mechanisms to gather how to get from A to B on these different items. That's not really the purpose of tonight's conversation. It's really to talk about the problems themselves as they exist and the priority with which our town should address them. And so, the conversation tonight really is about that and going really that, really that far. There'll be many more conversations as we take the information from here back to the select board, the select board then approving of a document that then I and Megan as our finance director put into our budget preparations. And then mid-February, there will be a budget presented that should listen to what we've heard tonight and what the board is providing us with their feedback. And then, of course, off to the races we go with our annual budget discussions. So, the idea is to really have this fully-throated conversation. And I do want to go around and have everyone introduce themselves really quickly. Again, this is a workshop, it's not a meeting, it's not, we're not, you know, it's really about conversation and about dialogue. But, the purpose that really I want to draw out is, the needs are many. The funding mechanisms to get there are much smaller. And so, we have to be smart, we have to be wise in what, how we get there. We have to be, we have to be careful in our planning and we have to find ways that we can prioritize and figure out how much can we really accomplish for what we can afford and how much can we afford? Because the needs, in some cases, may cause us to have to look at that conversation as well. So, again, I just maybe, I'd like maybe everyone here at the dais to go through and just introduce yourselves and then we'll start with Jeff and go around. So, Megan?
I'm Megan Brackett, I'm the finance director for the town of Rockport.
I'm Shawna, and I am the chair of the select board.
Yeah, Eric Boucher, member of the select board.
Denise Munger, member of the select board.
Jeff Parker, member of the budget committee. I've done a couple of other things.
Greg Damorecki, member of budget committee.
Benj Blance, member of the budget committee.
Clay Tolman, member of the budget committee.
Colin Shaw, budget committee.
Jared Cronkite, budget committee.
Jeff Charlin, chair of the budget committee and member of the capital improvement planning committee.
Joyce Moore, member of the capital improvement planning committee.
Steve Daley, capital improvement committee.
Steve Corson, capital improvement committee.
Alan Mitchell, chairman of the capital improvement committee.
I'm Bob Colmar, I'm the alternate to the capital improvement committee.
Wonderful. All right. So, let's, let's jump in. And I, rather than start on page one, I want to jump to, if we can, and we're not going to jump all around here tonight, I promise you. But, what I'd like to do is jump to the road reconstruction reserve, which is page 87. Wouldn't mind just jumping there. So, this probably for the members of the budget committee, this isn't a new conversation. If it was the capital planning committee, this is probably not a new conversation. So, we have, we are estimating that there's 68 miles of road in the town of Rockport and we are, if we use the current cost per ton of $80, over 10 years, that costs $7.4 million. Yikes. Well, we're averaging, when last year we were, we put in the budget $450,000. That is a problem. So, I want to talk about what that means and, and have that conversation here. It's really not about me telling all of you what I think my priorities are, but I just want to tell you what I've learned perhaps and then, you know, we can go from there. So, useful life of a road is supposed to be 10 years. I think that, and all of us in our own experience have seen roads not last 10 years, sometimes as short as seven years. Heavily traveled roads, roads with a lot of water issues, you know, insufficient drainage, too much tree cover, on and on and on we go. That seven-year number can creep up very quickly. So, we, as part of this process, and maybe just to pull this out, I asked our budget, our, all of our department heads to look very carefully and hard to add items to this list. So, for the conversations that were had by last year, there's a lot of new items on here. And I did that on purpose. And the reason why I did it on purpose is that I feel as though our, our department heads were not being as visionary as they needed to be with their departments. We needed to push, we needed to really look carefully about what do the next five, 10 years look, look like in the town of Rockport? And, in particular, we looked very carefully at roads. Do I think we have the exhaustive job that would be, you know, stand up with the finest engineering firms in the state of Maine? No, I don't. But I think we have a good representation of where we can start having a conversation in the town. So, going ahead here, what we would, to meet that $7.4 million number, or almost $7.5, look at $789,000 per year, which is about, well, almost 300, well, a little more than $300,000, $340,000 than what we were currently budgeting. If we go to the next tab, this is year one of our five-year paving plan. So, what I've done is, rather than a 10-year, let's just look at five years. 10 years is, a lot of things could happen in 10 years. Just talk about five years. So, in five years, this is what we would propose if we were to fully fund this amount that we're talking about. We're talking about, see the streets listed here, Amesbury, Alexander Drive, Beauchamp, Bonny Street, and on and on and on we go. That totals $784,000. That's paving predominantly. There's some culvert work that needs to be done in there, some additional materials, you know, stone in here, edging, all those things, riprap perhaps. But, look at the lists on that road. Now, below that, you'll see there's an additional $430,000. So, the, those, all of those roads listed, Ashley Terrace, Beauchamp Street, Lexington Lane, all of those totaling $1.2 million, those are all the streets that our public works director says need to be done next year. So, that's just staying on, if we're just looking at what we have right now, just looking on condition, not based upon what we can afford, what our needs are, our needs are telling us we have $1.2 million in needs in the next year. There's no way, I, I would be crazy to put a budget before you that says, "We're going to go from $450,000 to $1.2 million." But, I want you to understand what, what the, what the department heads are seeing and what we're being confronted with. Now, if we could jump to the next page, so this is the next year. So, this is not the forthcoming budget, but a year from now, okay? So, this would be the 2324 budget. So, you'll notice a number of those roads were at the bottom are now at the top, right? So, we've, we're now at the 777, pretty close to that 789 number, right? We have some longer streets on here, Mechanic Street, there's quite a bit more involved on Mechanic Street, a lot of structured drainage sidewalks, I mean, there's a lot that goes along with, with that type of street. The end of South Street, which we didn't do as part of the infrastructure bond, but largely you could see that number. Now, look below. So, these are the roads that, in addition to what we talked about last year, or, you know, this, this coming year, this number here is $2.1 million. So, you can see we're starting to fall behind here already. So, we were, we were short about, about $400,000. Now, we're going to be short another 1.4. Now, again, look at these streets on here. And I know we have a number of residents here live along Main Street. Unsolicited, again, before I got this job and had any reason to be in a meeting like this, I felt Main Street was one of the worst roads in town. Most heavily traveled, everyone's going up and down that, they're going up to Simon's Corner, they're going to the Snowball. The road's horrendous. This is two years out and we're not even touching Main Street, okay? So, now we'll go to year three. Again, we've moved the ones at the bottom of the page up. We've got Russell Ave., we've got South Hope Road, Forest Glen, number, Main Street from Camden Street to Simon's Corner, that's 787. Now, look at the roads below, $3 million. So, if I take the number we should have spent in the first two years, the 780 plus 780, right? So, we're almost at $5 million we should be spending over the next three years. That's just based on condition. Now, again, the idea of spending $5 million is, that's, I mean, there was a big gulp for all of us when probably we voted to spend a million dollars on the infrastructure bond. But, this, again, this is condition-based and things change. You, you know, from one year, this road held up better, this road fell apart. Those are, those are conversations that happen all the time. So, it's a snapshot in time, but we can keep going on. I won't belabor the point because you guys can look through all that and look through years four and five. But, this is, to me, the biggest issue we're facing. There's a lot of issues that we need to grapple with, but this is the biggest issue we have faced, we're facing here in the next few years. And so, that's what stood out to me in the first four months of being here, honestly, is how do we, how do we get around this issue? How do we face this issue? And, and so, that's why, you know, there's a ranking that I have to put on here. I wish I could put one with a star on it or one with a plus or something. This is, this is the, this is the problem that probably keeps me up at night. And then, last thing that I'll, you know, kind of open up to anyone who wants to speak, obviously, you know, we had the big rain event a couple, couple, two weeks ago almost. Can anyone say that's because we haven't taken care of our roads? No. I mean, it was an act of God, insurance companies would say so, I don't think we could argue any other way. Having said that, though, I know this number in the back of my head says we should be spending $5 million in the next three years. Have we been doing enough to get to this point? Would we be in this position if we were a little further ahead? I don't know the answer to that. But, events like that do cause everyone to kind of stand up and say, "Where are we doing? Where are we going?" We're going to go through and, and do a review of all of our major kind of water crossing areas, a lot of, a lot, many of them on Main Street. A lot of water passed through Main Street, through Goose River. And so, we're pursuing that, we're pursuing FEMA reimbursement. The culvert, as probably you all are aware, on Robinson Drive washed out. That culvert will cost to replace $771,000. That's not in this plan. There, it is in this plan, but at a much smaller number. That was obviously before we went through this. If we get some reimbursement from the FEMA, that will help resolve issues that were caused by damage, but it won't resolve, you know, Russell Avenue paving due to cost $52,000 from Village to Beauchamp Street. Unfortunately, that's a cost that we're going to have to discuss and try to figure out how do we get there. So, it's a lot of, a lot of information and I certainly, you know, understand that there's probably a lot of thoughts on this, but I just wanted, just, any thoughts or, about what we've talked about? Yeah, John?
So, John, you opened with this perception and, I mean, this, this point of view that you have. And obviously, you know, the roads are always the biggest ticket item. It's just, it's big and heavy and all that stuff. Are you, at the same time, when you say that for you, this is the most important thing, is it because the numbers are so huge and we just have to figure out a way to get an appropriate distance into it? Or, are you suggesting, at this early point, that as a function of what the town does for its citizens, that this particular function is in and of itself neglected, yes, over this, but is, you know, is the function more important than the other things? Or, is it equally subject to compromises, et cetera?
Yeah. It's a good question. I think that the gap between those two points of view are probably where the conversation has fallen apart, right? Is there, should there be a set apart amount of money that the town puts aside? I don't want to say blindly because $780,000 is not, shouldn't be blindly handled. But, on the other hand, I think that there is a, there's an opportunity sometimes where, well, there are other needs, you know? What about this? What about that? All of us have experiences that we all bring to the table and have caused us to support one cause over another. That's why we're here. We have, we have passions for various parts of, of the community. Infrastructure hits everybody. Everybody drives on our roads. Everybody has to get to work, everyone has to get to school, everyone, there is, there's, there's some unanimity behind that. There has been a, a lot of work that Megan and Jeff Hamilton had done a number of years ago to stratify the different roads and what was priority versus, not as relating to how, how many, how many, what's the traffic count per day was and how long it was and so forth. And that helps.
And you also had ages of people there.
Sure.
In some areas, there's some significant talk behind that.
Sure. And I think that there are, there are different ways to get to a type of solution, but the amount of whatever that solution is, is, the current pathways are short. And so, I don't think it's, at this point, I don't really want to say, "This is the solution," per se, as much of, this is really a list of problems. This is me saying, "These are the things that keep me up at night." And I need that you, the, the select board, but, but the budget committee, the capital planning committee, everyone who is really invested in thinking long-term about what makes sense for our community, to share, to share a little bit of that worry, to understand that these are things we have to confront. If, if the elected officials, as the budget committee says, "Look, we feel like that's not important," I'll speak, you know, at that point of what that specific idea is or, you know, for or against. But, the point, I think, is to get the issue on the table. And, and I don't, again, being new, I don't know how we've come here over the last few years. I only know where we are. But, I don't see a path that is going to be less troublesome without confronting it as soon as we humanly can.
Well said, thank you.
Thanks. Hey, Alan.
I guess you need to. I noticed on page 90, you have Mechanic Street and then including rebuilding granite sidewalks. I walk that street several times a week, there is no granite sidewalk on Mechanic Street. And yet, over on Russell, you've got from Village to Beauchamp Street, you don't say anything about the sidewalk. And that sidewalk from Mechanic up around Walt to Walt, the farm property needs to be replaced. And I didn't see, though I may have missed it because I just picked this up this afternoon.
Yeah.
I didn't see sidewalks at all in here.
They are in there.
Yeah.
What page is it?
101.
101.
And so, let me, I'll, I'll try to answer some of that.
Okay.
And I think, I think the, the point would, would be, one, don't dig, the, the details of this are, are not necessarily, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry too much about the details at this point because it's, it's not really at a, at a ready-for-prime time. This is what we plan to propose as, you know, as, as the town. But, the idea is that if we are going to replace the sidewalk, there has been some understanding that that hat would need to have granite curbing if, if done, if done within the village. And so, I think I would suggest that, in fact, the pathways meeting, you were out in August, I think when you were away.
Yes.
I had a chance to meet with some of them. We were talking about Mechanic Street and Spear Street and how do we find a better way to, to talk about these things? I don't think any of those details are worked out at this point, but I think the larger point of pathways, sidewalks are important and they're certainly in here. I would say, just, I think, and I don't want to speak for Megan, but I think we need a little bit more detail on what we have. I know there's been surveys that have been done.
Right. The survey's just finishing up now, you should have a report within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. And, and just because it's not in here, that doesn't, that, that information isn't in here, doesn't mean it negates it in any way. It strengthens our budget conversations, but the idea really was particularly talking about Mechanic Street or Russell Ave. In both instances, sidewalks and how our residents are getting back and forth on foot are important. I mean, you know, and we'll have to account for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, the only thing I'll say, I'm relatively new, I don't know if it's my third year on the budget committee, but there's a reason why the roads are underfunded. It's pretty simple, I learned early on, that's where the money is. And that's where people go to grab money when they have another project. But, I've been a big advocate that we properly fund the roads. I'm glad that this is a concern. I think that is the bare minimum we need to do is keep infrastructure where it should be because when we rebuild a road, it's going to cost us a lot more. And after we just, we already took out that bond and then to see these figures, this is not, this is very concerning. So, however we get there, I'm open to whatever proposals, but I'm, what I won't be open to going forward is, "Oh, let's cut a quarter million again for this other project." And we, we need to fund the roads correctly, we haven't been.
Are these all asphalts?
Yeah.
Okay? And have we always used asphalt in the past, like different recipes or same recipes historically? And have we looked at alternatives besides using asphalt?
That's a great question, Ben. So, I attended a training a couple, a couple of years ago, all states paving put on for a number of municipal managers in the area. And they talked about the idea of keeping good roads good. And the idea is that, that if you, if you have a good base, if you're properly drainage, if you have, if you've opened it up to sunlight, you can spend a lot less on the life of that road, once you get it to that point. And so, they, they advocated various different mixtures, but chip sealing, for those who are probably familiar with that term, is something that can work in a number of locations. Everywhere? No. But, some cases, it can, it can really reduce your cost. What we have here, in my opinion, is, this is still to the level of structural concern. Now, we could flip this on its head and say, "Once we get far enough into this process, we can go back to the roads that we feel are good and make sure that they are, we're spending more attention with them, whether it's, you know, you could do different things to crack filling and the like, to try to prolong the length of those roads, the length of their usable life." But, we're still at a point where this is really about such a structural failure in so many different locations that unfortunately, we can't have that conversation too often. Would I like a better plan that, that kind of moves in that direction? Absolutely. I just don't think we're quite there yet. I know that back in the olden days, when Jeff and I were up here, right, right? You know, we were, the town had, had been a part of, had a long-term plan, a road construction plan. And, we had, we, we put the same money aside and it's like, year after year, it wasn't even a conversation, it wasn't even discussed in large part. It was just done. And, we got ahead, we got ahead. And part of that is we had, we had a good development, good growth in, in Rockport. We had good residential development that was helping to keep, keep our mill rates relatively low. So, we didn't have the budget pressures we're facing now, but we had a plan and we stuck to it. And I think that's, my hope, whatever that's, whatever that plan is, that meets the type of needs that I'm kind of outlining here, I think that's what we would need to pursue as a, as a community. It needs to be a compact, really, between the select board, the budget committee, the residents at town meeting, the general public. This is how we're going to operate. And, and we just, we value, we place our values here and, and if we need to do above that so we can get ahead, great. But, I see, I see a, a pretty steep climb for us to go from $450,000 to even 789, which is what I'm outlining here. We haven't started budget, I mean, we really just started getting budget work from department heads. We haven't gone any further than that. But, it, it will be a challenge, even if everyone in this room said, "Great, go for it, you know, this is what we need." I'm going to have a hard time trying to find a budget that could get there without a lot of pain. And that's, that was worrisome to me, for sure.
I guess I heard the question a little bit differently, that it isn't like, "What else could we do on top of?" But, is there, because aren't some of the roads that failed during this last storm, roads that we had just paved?
Yes.
So, the question is, and I don't know the technology of road paving, I know, but I wonder, I mean, we've got to be building roads that are resilient for more frequent, heavier rainstorm events.
Absolutely.
And so, if, even if we said, "Oh, great, you know, we're just going to suck it up and make our residents, you know, increase taxes to pay for this." Are we, have we really analyzed what it's going to take to build roads in this new sort of climate environment we're in?
Yeah. I think that's a great question.
Which may not be more likely, but I guess I just, you know, if we're using really old, I mean...
Yes.
Old technology.
It's true, it's true. What I would say is that we have, let's take Mount Pleasant for, as a good example of that. When you get to the corner of Chris's Road, I think it's Chris's Road or Scott's Road, I never remember which one it is. Let's start then that goes up the hill. That entire road that we just paved came down and sat at the corner and then it kept going further down towards Route 17. Now, we had riprap in that, in that, in that, in that ditch line, we had cross culverts, but are they big enough? Are we drill out, we really at the point where we have to blast or drill out ledge to have deeper and more cross culverts and bigger cross culverts? I think that you're right. Those are conversations we have to have. Unfortunately, I don't know that they are less expensive, but they also require us, Megan and I and our public works director, Mike Young, to be more inventive and apply for more grants. So, one, so, part of, there were two stream crossings that are part, they're in this plan that were good-sized culverts that we knew needed to be replaced. One at West Street Extension and the other one at, what was it? Oh, Robinson Drive. So, we knew that, that just the age, it's a 50-year-old culvert. And, obviously, to go through that process, it means we have to do things bigger, we have to deal with storm surges that are bigger than they've ever been and fish crossings and the like. There's DEP permit, it is DEP grants, we were in, actually in the middle of applying for a DEP grant for both stream crossings that would give us $150,000, I think, for each grant, for each, each crossing. But, we just got the estimate that we're putting with our FEMA application of $771,000. So, it's, that would help, but for us to do the bare minimum, we still have to spend 770. So, it's, I think we have to be inventive, I agree, I agree. We have to be smart and we have to... We have to be smart and, and we have to give all of the talents we have available to us, for sure. Hey Jeff?
I think, and actually I, rather than address my comments to you, I'm going to address it to Jeff, in that I think that this year could be a turning point on how the Budget Committee does the work that it's charged with. In that, with these significant situations, and it's going to, you know, this snake has many tails. Quite possibly what would be helpful for the town is regardless of where we come individually on, on each of these decisions and, and even collectively, we might want to consider now a, a mechanism that, as we get closer to decision and voting, that this committee hosts a public forum or three or five. And, and to have that, that communication, because without that knowledge, without that, that educational aspect to it, it's going to be, oh my God, my taxes went up again. And, and I think that we're in, it, you know, an interesting opportunity presents itself for us to change the way that this committee, you know, works in its little bubble. Maybe we need to pinprick that bubble and I leave it up to the chair to think about ways to do that.
Also, I've never opposed to sort of shedding light on issues and bringing, bringing the public in. And if we have to make some hard decisions, then it certainly would be best to bring people in sooner than later, so they can weigh in on it. And I, I have another question I've been actually considering wanting to ask and that is say, say we can find eight hundred thousand dollars every single year to contribute to these roads. Do we have the capacity to handle eight hundred thousand dollars worth of road improvements every year?
That, that's, that is a good question.
And, and let me just follow up and I'll let you, let you, do we have to then, if we, if we can commit to eight hundred thousand, we have to actually then look at staffing for Public Works to be able to handle this additional workload?
Exactly. That's absolutely true. So I, I think that that is, I think that's absolutely the case. We need to look at what we're doing. Can we get more out of what we have? Is, is there, do we have adequate staffing to do what we need to do? You know, we currently are down one, one position, have been so for the entire building season. And we've also taken on mowing of some of the town properties. I, I, that's something I'm hoping to rectify as we enter the budget. That, I guess, there are, there are so many different ways to tackle this. There are, the staffing issue is not one I want to jump to, let's hire two more people. And it's hard enough to find the vacant position to fill that vacant position now. But I, I, I do think that we need to consider some alternatives, use some more part-time help, summer work. We're very seasonal. A lot of our needs are very seasonal. For some of these needs that are not necessarily someone who, who needs to operate an excavator, someone who needs to be able to, you know, have their CDL license. There's a lot of work that we have that is a little bit lesser than that. And so other ways we can put departments together and, and work with the harbor, we have a park attendant position at the harbor. There are ways that we can make that person a little more flexible. You know, those are the things that before we get into really figuring out what the budget looks like, that's where I'm spent, my mind has been spinning since the summer. How can we get more out of what we have potentially? And, and maybe freeing up the, the staff that we do have who are very capable and more capable than they've been allowed to this summer to do more. And that's really the challenge I have, I think, as I'm going into the budget, trying to figure out our staffing needs. Yeah.
Quick follow-up to that, have we, have we modeled out what would happen if we actually brought paving in-house? And, you know, I don't want all the paving contractors in town to get mad at me, but just a, just a question. Could we, could we bring on the expertise and actually do it more formally?
I, I don't know. We haven't looked at, I mean, there's obviously equipment we'd have to purchase. And, and the biggest cost is buying the, the, buying the asphalt from, you know, whether it's Pike or whomever. So I don't know that we would save a great sum in doing that. That's the other part of this number that is somewhat misleading, I think. Because the number is based upon the idea of paving, you know, basically every road once every ten years. But we all know there's more that goes into that need than just paving. You know, you need to replace those culverts. You need to address the shoulders. You need to make sure your drainage is done properly. We're, Megan and I spent a long time trying to make sure that those numbers are baked into what you're seeing for each of those roads. But is it, you know, exact, no, not really. And so that's, so on the, on, in the aggregate, yes, there's, you know, I think we're dealing with everything. But truth be told, you know, when we put together maybe what you would see at the Budget Committee this, this winter, I think you're going to see a, a more detailed number for each of those roads, maybe than what you see here. So just understand, this is, this is really kind of the estimate, not quite a ballpark figure, but the estimate of what that road need would look like.
And John, I think, like you said, maybe you're thinking ten years. But I was looking at Beach Hill and it feels like that was just done and it's on here for twenty-six. So understanding some of those, if it's not ten years wise, that road at most, it could already got beat up by the storm. Like what are the thoughts behind it? I think as we appropriate a big number, it's going to be helpful to understand, like you said, the buildup of that number and why it's justified.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, that's a great point, I guess. You're right, if you, when you go down to look at those, those years, you're like, why is that up already? You have the section of South Street, for example, that was part of the infrastructure bond and that, that was so needed, oh my goodness, thank goodness that got done. But it's back on the list already, you know, at the last, I think the last year or the next to last year. So these things do come up again, but that might be one of those roads where you talk about making good roads, good. If you get back to it sooner, maybe you aren't having to do as much or as costly a repair. And that's, that's kind of the purpose of this, is if we can get around on this and get ahead of it, then we can have more of a stable cost and, and a lower cost, you know, in the future. So that's the hope, at least from my perspective. So anything else now on that? I mean, that's, I don't mean to take all the air out of the room on one issue, but, but it's a big issue. And I appreciate you guys really hearing that out, so thank you.
I just had one more question. I'm sort of gleaning from the way you're talking about it, that these are prioritized on the ground and on the basis that if we don't, if we don't repave these roads in the next year or two, we're going to be rebuilding them three years or four years. That's how you've sort of organized it, that, because obviously that's what we want to avoid is rebuilding.
Yeah, and, and that, so that, that is just a repaving number. That's just simply, you know, looking at it as it is.
Prioritized by, I know it's not rock, I mean, you can't pinpoint it so exactly and say, if we don't pave that this year, next year for sure, we're going to be rebuilding it.
Right. But the cost will increase. The further we delay and defer maintenance, the increase of the cost of the road.
Per mile cost was.
Right, not just on the basis of asphalt increasing as gas prices have increased, but also we'll have more needs that, you know, what was just a small fix is now a bigger fix.
Are these costs based on one, many, several contractors? How do we?
So the paving number is based upon a, a fixed price per ton. So that's, it's, and, and that, that number doesn't change from year to year. We're not adding, there wasn't an escalator in there from year over year. So it is, it's a rough number.
It's really hard to estimate asphalt costs because diesel fuel goes into it, the labor market is crazy off the charts right now. I mean, we've seen paving operators in our Route one sewer project that we're doing getting paid seventy, eighty dollars an hour. So that market is just off the charts high. So to estimate what paving prices are going to be two years from now is nearly impossible.
I, I know you said this, I just want to say it hopefully really clearly that we're saying eight hundred thousand dollars is what we need to be investing. But we're saying our starting point is many, many years behind. So eight hundred thousand dollars every year keeps us many, many years behind, behind. So the real number is significantly higher than eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
If, if you were to, let's just say, if you were to try to hit that three-year number, be caught up in three years, we'd have to spend one point three million dollars every year between now and the next three years. So that would be roughly a million dollars more than we spent last year.
But that gets you to a state of good repair for how much of the system? Are we still woefully behind at that point, or does it get us to the fifty percent level?
The five million, the five million would get us to two-thirds of the way through the system.
To state of good repair.
To state of good repair, yeah.
And there's still that one-third that is woefully behind.
Right, right. But that, but at least that, the woefully behind would be on the same cycle as the rest of us age and gray and whatever else. It's, you know, all of that. It would be, at least we'd be caught up to that point. And, and I'm not advocating spending five million dollars in the next three years, but I, that's, that's the point. Right, absolutely.
And you're saying it would take about fifteen years at the eight hundred thousand dollar level to catch up, basically?
Right, but that would be using, it would be caught up in a way that that might not necessarily account for that deterioration that you're.
So we're going to, you know.
You know what I mean?
So we really can't catch up.
You really can't catch up at these hundred thousand, yeah.
Eight hundred thousand would be a minimum number.
It is, yeah.
The new infrastructure bill, this is a Jeff Charlin question, I can't take credit for it. The new infrastructure bill, is that, any of that trickle in to the, to the cities, to the towns, from the state? Do we know anything about it?
No, no.
We don't know.
We don't know.
Okay.
We don't know.
Yeah, billions of dollars there, hopefully.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't mean to be, I, I think we would, of course, we would look just to try to be part of one point two trillion. I think that we, you know, we'd be foolish not to. My experience is that the feds like to get excited about their projects and then maybe they'll give it to the states. And the states will get really excited about their projects and there's not a lot left for little old Rockport. But there is a bridge that's going to be replaced here, supposedly in twenty twenty-four. Maybe there are projects that are off of that that we can build off of. That's, I guess that's, that's kind of the bigger thinking we have to really look at, is how do we, how do we get creative? How do we, how do we try to deal with these issues in a way that takes some of this bite out of what's clearly coming? But on the other hand, understanding, we probably also have to do more. So the, holding those two things together. I don't think we're going to get enough, I could get five, five million dollars over three years from the feds to cover our, you know, our current concern. But can we get street crossing issues on Main Street covered? Maybe that's, maybe that's an upgrade. You know, maybe there are some, some other spots that, you know, you build off of. Certainly we've talked about sewer and you guys have all read about that. There, there are ways that we can make, we can get creative, but the purpose of tonight obviously is understand we're all in this together. We're all, we're all in the bridge linking arms and we're all talking to each other, you know? Let's make this happen, so. Okay, anything else on this before we go to the more normal, everyday capital planning conversations? Okay, let's go to the top of the page. So this is page thirteen, I think?
Yep.
Yeah, audio video upgrades. And I can, I can give you, I can give you a little bit on each or we can just kind of, are there any thoughts in particular? I don't know how much everyone has rolled into this. This is, we're, we're in a different era now with both people watching at home and the pandemic has really driven that home. The ability for someone to participate via Zoom. For example, Mark right now is probably watching, hi Mark. And we could have members, you know, not present, but participating and have, have all of you here. So that's, that's a goal that, that I have, but we need to do some things in that regard. So any thoughts on, on this particular item?
Same issues as the previous years?
No, it's kind of different.
A little different?
Well, it's in that the aging out, first of all, if anyone tells you that, I think it says here ten years, that's a lie. But it's not only throughput and the ability to do things, when you go into a hybrid situation, all of a sudden, the amount of computers that are over there that you need for input and output go up dramatically. So those are some of the more expensive things. That, that box camera in the, in the corner there that we don't control is a fixed thing, was a way to save money initially. That should be replaced, but we're also into the next system. So for instance, all of the little black boxes that take the signal from the video switcher and then send it out to the world, they're all in different connectors now than the computers that we have. So it's, the ten, actually some of the, dare I say, no, I won't say it. It's, it's all, it's all replacing, upgrading and also adding to the capabilities. And, and the, the hybrid meeting is where the adding to the capability, because when, when we, when someone designed the system, you know, and it grew from fifteen years ago, hybrid wasn't even a thing, that wasn't even in the, often.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, let's talk about balcony seating. Put people in the seats.
Let me just perhaps just digress a little bit here and to provide maybe an update for the Budget Committee and kind of. We've sort of reorganized how we manage the Opera House. Maybe, you know, Drew has left the town before I got started. And wise decisions made by Carrie and the board. Now Megan is the department head who is overseeing, she needed more to do, clearly. And she's overseeing this, this building. And so there's a number of items in here that perhaps are new because we're really trying to take a stronger look at this building. What, what does the Opera House do for Rockport? What does it mean other than as a symbol? How does it, how does it work for Rockport as well? And, and so Megan has put some great efforts in, we've kind of moved money around. We've hired a couple of marketing agents to handle town produce groups and to bring them in as well as, you know, kind of their more traditional weddings. So with two different people that Megan's overseeing. But the needs of the building are still there. Age of the building is still here. The renovations of nineteen ninety, it's a long time ago now, doesn't feel like it, but it is. And so there's a number of items in here that, you know, we've added or that are part of this conversation. And seating is part of that. I don't know if you want to maybe take, maybe more, anything more you want to add to that or?
No, it's just, like John said, this building needs some attention, especially if we're going to be able to market it to wedding events and things of that sort. There's no reason why this facility couldn't at least break even come year end if we market it and sell it the right way and provide a welcoming place for people to come to.
Any thoughts, questions on this? Comments?
Sorry.
No, this is, I, yeah.
It's really important to understand that what this gem of a building we have here is, is a niche that, that fits really well with all the other things within thirty miles. We have a certain size, it's not big, it's not small. We have, you know, rooms that people, you know, people can tune up in down here before they go upstairs as a quartet or something. But we have tremendous flexibility. We can, we can have a birthday party which is designed to raise money for a nonprofit. So everybody's dancing one day and the next day, put all those seats back on the floor. And, and then we have, you know, a, a, a world-class quartet. So it's an incredibly flexible situation and that is where we've sort of not marketed it. The building can do, there are lots of stuff the building cannot do, no question. But there's this very cool whole middle ground that it can, and that's where our strengths are.
Have they ever, Bill's kept talking about an endowment. I brought it up three years ago, I'm assuming. We're at the same place we've been. There is none?
No endowment, no.
Or we're not, is anyone working on it? Or the committee, the Opera Committee or whoever's?
That's been disbanded. You have to find people who are passionate about the Opera House, you want to head that up.
You need some, you need an affinity group, you need people that, right, and there's money here, if you can tap into that.
And I, I think that's the, I think that's the next chapter though, is, you know, we, we. And I, I think that's the, I think that's the next chapter though, is, you know, we need, we need to identify the need. This is, that's really what this process is about. This is about identifying the needs and where those funding sources come from. It's really, we need the priorities on the list so that we're all talking about them. But when they're endorsed or they're part of the conversation that the, the select board is hearing, that's when staff goes to work and really tries to, to work to build those groups. I think you're absolutely right, Jerry, when we need, we need a group of, of residents who want to take this, take this building on as they did in nineteen ninety and, and work together to, to dress up this place. I mean, this room did not look like this thirty years ago, it, it was not in this condition. It was a tremendous undertaking for a number of groups, the Guardian Club and the Bay Chamber and residents to, to make that happen. And we need to, to, to find a way to make that work. Legacy Rockport's staying a great model right now, taking on the Lime Kilns, taking on the Vulcan, that's a, that's a great project. But there's others who I think can also assist and, and we probably just need to be more aggressive about trying to find those people who could help, but also clearly identifying the needs. And I think that's, that's the one thing I think you're gonna see a lot in here is this is about drawing out needs. And you may sit here and say, geez, that, maybe not balcony seating, but that doesn't seem like that's, that higher priority. And I, and I probably wouldn't disagree with you in, 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 in some cases, but the point is to really get to the top of the page. So at least, maybe it's not a party for this group, but if there may be someone out there who wants to spend thirty thousand dollars on balcony seats for the Rockport Opera House, I've got it on the list, we put the group together and we're, we're on our way. That's, I mean, that's what we have to do, I think.
We also are focusing on getting the public to reengage with this building. So we're working on some like revitalization events that we will hold hopefully this summer, depending on what happens with the pandemic, to get people in Rockport interested in the Opera House again. I think it's kind of something that's been forgotten or people don't realize it's available to rent or host your events here. So I think hoping, hopefully getting the public back in here with these events will help spur some of that.
Any other thoughts on balcony seats? Moving ahead, body cameras. We really move all over here, don't we? We really, I mean, it's alphabetical, but I don't know, I don't know that there's any.
Alphabetical like balcony then to body?
Yeah.
You know, we're the Bs, I suppose.
Yes. We have body cameras now, no?
We don't.
This is to add them.
Yep, that's right. So we currently don't have body cameras on our officers. The idea, again, this is not an immediate need from, from my perspective, but, but it's something that chief feels as though that it's, it's quite helpful to keep liability low for our officers. Of course, we're in a, we're in a small community, a quiet community, we love that, we love not being found. But unfortunately, we, we're fine being found all of the time now. And reducing the liability, we have great training for our officers. You know, I, I wouldn't trade any of them for anything in the world, we've got great, great guys, great group of, of officers. And providing them as much opportunity to protect, protect the town and protect themselves and, and protect the entity of all that they, they do is important. But it's also paying six thousand dollars.
Is this in relation to Camden also? Are they gonna be on the same fiscal year, getting years?
Right, we need to, right, it's almost like if one goes in.
Right.
We can't, the other can't be left out.
Right, right. Yeah. I mean, certainly your priorities are your priorities and I would never tell you to follow the same, but there's also, it makes a lot of sense to buy them all at once, right? I mean, that's training all at once. We're currently going, undergo, we bought a new training program that, that chief is implementing that covers both departments. Camden's gonna pay the first year, we're paying the second year. It's a little bit of an offshoot here, but the, it's the same sort of ideas, it's the same, same regulations, everybody knows the same thing. And it's actually, it's a model that's being used in the area too, so Rockland will be using the same sort of training as well. So there's some unanimity across departments, which is really helpful. All right, any other thoughts on body cameras?
So these, things are out several fiscal years, it's just sort of seeing what the five-year plan looks like, but we will only be approving a one-year budget.
Well, that, yeah, so this is really to set the prior, all priorities. So if, let's say for example, everyone here is like, we need body cameras tomorrow. Comes back to the five of you and you say, geez, we agree, yeah, it should be tomorrow.
Sure.
We adjust, you know, we go in, change everything around, so that way when the budget comes out, we would be dealing with it. If you say, you know, where it sits right now is, yeah, I think three years out? Yeah, three years out. Then really the whole plan is really what you're adopting, you're adopting the whole plan, all the priorities that, it's, it's a three-year problem. It's a, it's a one-year problem, it's a five-year problem. So that's really what, what, at the end of this, the select board will be endorsing is the whole list of priorities, not just the one year upcoming, the whole five-year plan. And, but we take that, the one year, and that's what we put into our budget.
And we couldn't bind a select board three years down the road, even if we sort of thought that was the right priority to be.
This document is a very fluid document, because the items are gonna be added. If there's a donor that wants to pay for the balcony seating, then obviously that comes off, but it could very well be replaced with something else. So this isn't like the budget document that is what it is, this is a very fluid document that will be updated as it needs.
Which is great, I think it's wonderful to have this sort of vision from the departments, I just.
And, and the idea, hopefully next year, when I'm not in my first year, this is a much smaller conversation for everybody, we've already had the conversation this year. But unfortunately, I'm gonna make you go through pain and suffering here.
One of the, one of the advantages for, for the select board and for the budget committee and being part of this process is that we, we've seen over the past few years that I've been on the budget committee, items drop onto the budget that we're supposed to be making some decisions on and we don't have the context for how they're prioritized amongst other projects throughout the community. And the other bit is that there's a sort of lie, and I don't mean that in the worst way, but that we whisper into our own ears saying, this is just a one-time event, but the, the issue is every year has one-time expenses. And so this gives us the ability to see forward into up to five years, other one-time type expenses. So that they're not actually one-time expenses, there's just an ongoing reinvestment into the capital infrastructure of the community. So we're not, as you said, we're not, you know, committing future boards, we're just informing future boards and this is the direction we thought we were gonna be taking.
Anything else on that? All right, concession stand equipment. This may seem like an odd fit, but tell why this is in there, Megan.
You alternated them, it was nice.
Uh, we, when we made the change of how the Opera House is gonna operate, I met with other Opera House directors in the area to see what works, what doesn't work. Because obviously it's been tried and true, why do we want to go down that path? And surprisingly, they said, your money isn't necessarily made on ticket sales for produced events. It is made on concession sales and souvenir sales. That that's where the market is, is that they can make three, four times the amount of money versus just selling the tickets. It also makes the space more desirable. I mean, if you have an event at dinnertime and can provide light snacks, then it makes it better for people with families or easier with people with families or anyone to come. But their big driving point in all the people that I met with is this is where you make your money.
Any thoughts?
Comments?
Who would have the liquor license?
Whoever is serving the alcohol. So like now we work with Cafe Miranda, Flatbread, they already have their liquor license and then they just get an on-premise license.
So they have the liability.
Correct.
I think that's what your question really was, was.
Any other thoughts? Questions? All right, let's go to cruiser cameras. Again, we're just really all over the map here. We do have cruiser cameras right now, for, for those who aren't familiar. And this would be upgrading what we have, the end of their life expectancy. They work very well, we had a situation, I can't get into, but it's amazing what they can capture, audio, visual. I mean, it's a really phenomenal system that we have now, I can only imagine what they'll have in twenty twenty five, but it's, it's a necessity for our, our officers.
And I'm assuming the body cameras and the cruiser cameras will be interchangeable.
That's what I was hoping. And we, I, we haven't had that conversation about the vendor that offers both, but that was my hope, yeah, absolutely, Steve, yeah.
Yeah, because that'll be fifty thousand dollars in cameras in one year.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other thoughts? Let's talk about cemetery expansion. Seaview Cemetery, I'd say conservatively is our most popular cemetery. I don't think that's really a business people want to get into, but it's, we are running low on our lots. The columbarium is further down here, I think, as, as another way to try to expand our options for people who wish to, to use Seaview Cemetery as, but obviously the, the use of lots. We do have our, we do have a number of lots in, in that, kind of that, that upper section, it's very wet, kind of away from the road. I'm not sure how familiar all of you are, but basically if you look at that upper section up by, well, Chestnut Street, but RSI Russell Ave, kind of the, it was kind of the outcropping of, of trees, and if you get in that lower corner, quite wet. And so we, we need to upgrade the roads there. We did have some storm damage as well that came through this, this FEMA, this storm on Halloween, which, but it's really more replacing what's damaged as opposed to anything that can build up or improve our situation, unfortunately.
Do we have enough land there for expansion? Meaning, I know there's some wet areas, but we'll have land be aside from that. Because right now, for those of you who don't know, there's a moratorium, so only Rockport residents can purchase lots with Seaview. So of course that causes obviously some concern with our neighboring Camden, because one would think that cemetery is also in Camden, but it's not.
Yeah, right.
So I just, I didn't know if we had the actual, aside from the, where we're gonna put the columbarium, I don't know if we had actually the, the land to do more lots.
There's, there's additional land, which is just beyond, there's a kind of a ditch that runs, that is effectively the barrier between us and, and Old Mere Farm. There is some land on the, kind of the, behind that tree line, it's not a lot.
Yeah.
I think the site of the columbarium probably is the primary need to deal with that first and foremost and then see what you have left over. I mean, the opportunities of columbarium, and we'll talk about it in a bit, but, but in terms of the amount of square footage you're using of the space, doesn't, I don't want to sound crude, but certainly you'll be able to go up. I mean, it's, you know, they, they say you don't make more land in real estate, which is why the prices always go up. Well, you can make more land in a columbarium in terms of the, the real estate of a, of a cemetery, so. Anyway. Any other thoughts? Yeah, Helen, sure.
Yeah, I noticed the ratings were a level three for the roads and a level six for the columbarium. The cemetery committee has chosen a space for the columbarium and the budget was cut. Last year, we were putting a set amount and our previous town manager said he had a new way of getting some of those funds. I don't know if he passed that on to you. This columbarium.
There's a list, Helen, there is a list.
The columbarium is, will be self-sufficient. And that back part of the cemetery is also very wet, the roads are very, very poor, you can't get a vehicle back in there on many days, so.
Yeah, I agree, we should probably look at that rating.
I can't.
I think you're right, we should probably look at that rating.
The two need to go together.
Agreed.
And the columbarium is about a third of the way back, because it is so wet up in the front, you cannot bury people there nicely.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good point, yeah. I, I hadn't even thought of the, the combination of those two issues oddly enough, so. I went through them in alphabetical order myself, so there's, the, the combination that sometimes didn't connect. Well, here's a few that do kind of coincide somewhat, so we'll move ahead to dinghy docks. We had our, one of our, the busiest year for dockage in the town's history this year. We had an incredible number of boaters visit our harbor and pay. I think we doubled our budgeted number for dockage at the harbor. And so there are needs there and there are opportunities there, but there also means that there are costs that go along trying to maximize our opportunities. The number of dinghies that we have far, or the need for dinghies far outpace what we have available for space, far, far, far. There was a first come, first served opportunity this, this spring to get dinghies that I think worked out for some, for some not so well. And there's a, there's a thirst for, for more opportunities and more options to, to get to those dinghies. So dinghy docks are part of this. I know that the budget committee had spent a long time discussing harbor costs and, and mooring fees and all, and the like. I, I, I know that there's a, we all want to try to, try to make everything budget, you know, neutral and, and trust me, I want to do the same. But just talking about the need itself, and that's really what this process and this conversation is about, is we have more need for dinghies than we have available space. And that's really what this conversation is about.
And we can put in more moorings, apparently, if we get more dinghy space.
I think that's true.
And we can make money on moorings.
Yeah, we can make more money on moorings, right, right.
Well, why, why is that? Or, or are you saying there'll be more boats in the harbors if there's more dinghies?
Well, what I was just reading in here that Abby had said is they've got room for more moorings out in the harbor, but because of the cap, the limit on dinghy space.
They can't put them in.
They're not putting them in. So if we can create more dinghy space, which we charge for two, you see the hun.
Yes, there is a fee.
And if all of that's self-sufficient or even a little bit revenue positive for us, that's good.
It would be eventually, it's just the initial.
I don't know if it's a typo where the next page says the annual income is a hundred and fifty dollars.
There are two things cut off. One had said income, the other said source, total income.
I think we can make a stronger.
I think it cut off part of the, part of the, it was one of those cells, you know, where you can only see. So, so when you expand the cell, which you guys can't do here, estimated income fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars.
That's better.
So how much is a dinghy, is it like three hundred bucks?
Hundred twenty-five.
Okay.
Is it all summer?
Camden's like, Camden's higher than that, I think.
And then what's, what are you hinting at, Jerry? What's the rental? What's the rental? I'm sorry.
Never seems to be in.
Look at the fees.
And then what's the rental for the mooring, because one drives the other?
Yeah.
And there's what, three hundred fifty?
What was it, two hundred, two fifty?
I don't know, she's, they, the last meeting, they went through the numbers, so it's gonna go up. It's three, three something and two something, non-resident, resident. It's gonna go to, if they, if they approve their budget with those numbers.
What is, three hundred fifty moorings?
Three, I don't remember, three twenty-five or three fifty? No, it's, I'm trying to remember what the numbers were, I don't remember.
A hundred thousand dollars, but are you gonna afford that?
Well, I think that's definitely an area you should support.
Yeah, I, again, I, and I don't, I don't want to get too far into, I, I know, like I said, the revenue neutral side of all of us is like, let's, you know, but, but if, if the bare minimum, we have space, we can sell more space, that's a good thing. We think we can make this dinghy dock pay for itself quite quickly. There are other, there are other cascading impacts, I think, from that we can all talk about and I'm sure the board will be talking about, harbor committee will be talking about. I have some ideas.
There's so few places in the town we can actually make some money, and the harbor's one of them.
And this is.
Go take a look at that, agreed.
When their new, when their new budget comes up, I think it will be very good.
Yeah.
I don't want to believe, like I heard you said, Eric, did you say the, are the mooring fees gone, are they considering that?
Yeah, pretty much, there's gonna be some increases on almost everything. Not the things that were more recently increased, but some of the other ones.
And I would, and I would also add too, you know, I met with the harbor committee this fall, I went around, met with every committee and had a chance to say hi. You know, I think one concern I heard from so many of them is that, well, you know, the revenue neutral and all this and. is that, well, you know, the revenue neutral and all this, and I said, right, but, you know, if you have needs, we deal with those needs. Those needs are kind of separate from the the the, how we generate our um, our offsetting. And so dinghy docks, dock expansion, dredging the inner harbor, um, all of those pieces that are part of this capital plan, they all cost money, no doubt, but to understand how you can charge more for a mooring fee or charge more for a dinghy, it's, if one covers the other in some respects. And having that conversation, there'll be a time and a place to have that conversation where the money, that we have to show that the money works. But we don't have to do that today. All we have to talk about is, is there need, how high, how, what's the relative need as in relation to other uh, things we have to deal with, so.
It will, I think it will be a good budget though, when it comes in.
Any other thoughts on dinghy docks? It kind of was related to dock expansion. Again, same sort of concept, we have more needs than harbor. I I have these old photos that are in my office from when I grew up of of the harbor and it's, it's like, they don't even recognize it anymore, right? It looks a completely different place, but that's where it is. And for whatever reason, this summer, everybody wanted to be on a boat and everybody wanted to be in Rockport Harbor. And people who hadn't come to Rockport Harbor before, the type of people that were coming to Rockport Harbor, they had found us. For some weird reason, we were found. And so it 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 puts pressure on our existing boaters, our 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 residents, our non-residents that are moored in our harbor. And so we have to, we have to work with that. And so, again, this is part of um, part of that, trying to expand our our options for dockings. Um, they're also looking at options to um, rent out moorings. So the idea of, let's say, I have a boat, which I don't, and you wouldn't want me on your boat, be bad luck. Um, I go out, I'm gonna sail wherever and their northeast harbor does this where they allow for um, you can sublet effectively your mooring and allows that mooring to, those mooring fees or that, I guess nightly rental to come back to town. You wouldn't get as much back as you would say if they were docked up against our dockage area there with power and wifi and all that goes with that and a pump out station. But you'd be able to be moored and in Rockport Harbor, which would be a pretty good place to be. So those are some ideas that the the harbor committee is looking at, and I think those are pretty exciting. The liabilities of that, not sure of, but that's why, that's why the harbor committee has the winter. That's what they do.
Is there anything with the boat club that that the boat could, club could take more on and for fee, like a transfer of service or whatever to lessen the, lessen the operation of needing dock space?
That's an interesting idea, you know.
You know, I don't know if they have any full-time people over there, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, like Camden, you know, yacht club, they have the, the launch that goes out and a lot of towns too.
That's a great, yeah.
Yeah, the boat club does not have that. There's no staff, there's no, it's, there's a dock.
Maybe they could be, you know, if it's introduced to them.
Yeah.
Only takes one person to, person to run a launch.
Yeah, it won't be me, but somebody can. Somebody can do it, good. Dredging the inner harbor, I don't mean to jump ahead. If anyone had anything, just throw your, throw something at me, but dredging the inner harbor. Um, these were all items, we had currently Endorski, I should also mention, did a study, some some study for us last fall. Um, and it's still, um, my predecessor, Phil Fos, been hired, um, and looked at some of these ideas and the feasibility of them. Not in great depth, but um, the need to dredge the inner harbor and and remove some ledge near Goose River, um, is, you know, I don't know if anyone had a chance to see some of the photos I put up on Facebook. Um, and I'm not saying anyone has to be on Facebook, but we got some crazy, crazy sw- like, I don't even know how to describe it, but the outflow from Goose River.
Oh, my gosh.
In the harbor.
So weird, yeah.
It's a, it's a really strange little piece of geology there. Yeah, after the water get past your place, you got, uh, if you were in an inner tube, Alan, I think you would probably have been at the harbor no time, but um, in any event, it's uh.
No, I couldn't have made it through the COVID.
Have a bumper boat situation, I think. Um, but in in any event, this is uh, looking at the dredging and and this is obviously trying to maximize, maximize um, that that river outlet.
And is that something, I mean, if you're dredging the inner harbor, is that something Rockport Marine might wanna share? I mean, they're flattening out over there, losing some of their area.
Yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good point, yeah. I mean, it's, the whole harbor is is our, is our responsibility, but there may be some benefits.
Yeah, maybe. I don't know what they're interested in the town is.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, John?
Yeah, I am.
Any way of using TIF money for that since it's within the area?
Good question. I don't know.
It's not an approved project in the TIF district, but that doesn't mean that the TIF document couldn't be amended to include it.
It never hurts to ask though. We, there are, yeah, there are needs for those projects and we'll look at those in the budget. Any other thoughts on the inner harbor dredging? Opera House Gas Range, this is a six because this was funded in this prior year, in this budget, this existing year budget, but the purchase hasn't been made as of yet, so, um, yeah.
Yeah, isn't the money already set aside?
Yeah, yeah, but it hasn't been done yet, so.
I know.
Yeah, I thought you were still shopping, Eric. I thought you were shopping.
I was.
Try the good one. All right. Turned on that, Public Works Generator. I was surprised when I came here to learn that we don't have a generator at Public Works. That's not great. If there's anybody who wanted to have power in the middle of the storm, it's the folks plowing the roads. Um, there is a grant process that we just became aware of that FEMA, was it FEMA? Yeah, uh, doing a fifty percent match on generator purchase and installation, so we're gonna pursue that. Um, again, this came out like last week, unrelated to the the Halloween storm. Uh, but that's, you know, that's having our ears up, listening, being aware of what's what's coming down the pike, but you know, I think one of the first things when I started, Megan's like, yeah, there's no generator at Public Works, middle of July, you know, that's how you know, one of these things, just, it needs to be on the list, so, um, yeah. That, and I, and I consider that a pretty high priority, obviously. Any thoughts on this? All right, let's go to harbor entrance. Now, this is, this is not, uh, again, a little bit further down on the on the priority list, but um, for those who are unfamiliar, obviously, there's some challenges with getting into the harbor. If you're going right, heading into the village and taking a right-hand turn, it's, you know.
Says not to, actually. There's a big sign.
Some don't, but.
Some don't abide abide by those lines.
Right, right, or 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 even taking, taking the, taking a left out of there, that's, you know, so there are challenges with that, um, that area. Additionally, um, some of you may have known that Legacy Rockport has funded um, some work that the town hired to look at the lime kiln number two, which is the first lime kiln that you see as you come down the sharp bend. Um, we pay, was it fifteen thousand, thirteen thousand, somewhere in that ballpark, if I'm right? Um, did some exploration of the kiln and and what shape it's in. Um, we'll talk a little bit with that, the, about that, but there's a fairly, fairly large retaining wall that holds up that road. And effectively the lime kilns are the retaining wall for the retaining wall. Um, and so there are concerns with that, obviously, especially after the exploration was done. Um, thankfully, it's a lot of heavy rock and doesn't move very easily, but we should be looking at that entrance. Does it make sense? Is it the right place? It couldn't be built differently? There's a new bridge that's going in. How does that play into this entrance? Um, there is land that the town owns which goes past Goody's Beach and around um, that new white house where Manon Ingham lived, um, that's up, um, around. That's possible, uh, a possible, you know, alternative location for a road. But there are challenges, I guess, is is my larger point, and and the purpose of this, purpose of this, again, it needs to be on the radar somewhere. Does that have to be at the top of the list? No, but we need to have these conversations so everyone is aware there may come a time next year where I say, rocks are coming out of the the retaining wall. We need to move fast.
The other thing that Legacy Rockport did do is survey work on all those lime kilns and compared it with data from ten years ago, and they have not moved at all, so it, they are stable. And I think it was, the town put five thousand towards it and Legacy Rockport paid the rest, so the town only paid five thousand for the lime kiln work.
Anything that could be shared with the state when they reduce, when they change the bridge to put some things?
It's a great question. Yeah. I think, so there, they met, it was a very preliminary meeting, uh, we had with them in August or September that affected, who 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 are the people we need to, who owns these properties? I mean, really high level, nothing really important, but they're gonna come back this winter. Those are, those, we have real conversations. I think that needs to be part of the conversation cuz obviously that entrance is right there. Even even if you're just talking about pedestrian crossings, you know, that that did come up. Do you want a sidewalk on the, I guess, the harbor side of the bridge? Well, right now, we don't have that. We've all seen people standing there to take a photo or, uh, you know, you know, whatever it may be. Scares me to death every time I drive by somebody standing there, but those are the conversations you have, and there's pedestrian access, you know, coming up from the harbor. Does that extend a vehicle? I don't know. It's a good question. Anything else on the harbor entrance? Any thoughts?
Why is that a harbor project instead of a public works project?
Oh, boy. Yeah, that's a, it's a good question. There's, there is a a bit of a ongoing discussion as to what is the line for the harbor? Is the line for the harbor the edge of the seawall? Is the edge of the harbor the park? Is it, you know, up by the road? And so there's been various degrees of conversation of what is in and what isn't. I didn't want anyone to to miss a project because they thought it was someone else's. I'd rather have had two different things in here that said the same thing as opposed to missing something. Um, we really haven't really defined which is which at this point. Um, I know the budget, I know there were conversations about how to devise where the budget, how to do the break-even point for the harbor, but that's not really in this. I didn't, that's not baked into any of this, yeah. Yeah. All right, uh, any other thoughts on that? Here's one that's definitely a harbor project, uh, harbor staff restroom. Um, again, with the use of the space, it was quite busy at the public restroom, and the idea was to plum some sort of small bathroom in there. Not a great cost, fifteen thousand dollars, but there's currently no sink, no mop sink. It's, if you have, the bathrooms are all public, on the public side, so it can create some challenges, let's say. All right, we'll move ahead to a harbor master truck. The idea here is to find, um, right now, a lot of the uh, the harbor masters times using their own vehicle. And so trying to find a way to limit that, uh, whenever possible. I don't think we're necessarily looking for uh, um, an eighty thousand dollar F three fifty. We're looking for something that's a little bit more manageable. Um, again, part of this to me is potentially, and again, I'm I'm just gonna caution myself cuz I told everybody we shouldn't talk about the funding sources of this. But if we have other needs around town, if we have a a park attendant who's working in parks or or going around around the villages to fix some of these issues, there is multiple uses for this vehicle. But the harbor master does use her own vehicle greatly for um, getting out and moving around.
So is it for trash? I wasn't sure what the harbor master, she has a boat.
She has a boat, right, um, yeah.
It says she could do park, would not have to rely on Public Works to do the park maintenance and trash runs.
Right, right. Basically to make the department self-sufficient, so a lot of um, a lot of the harbor responsibilities have some have been intermingled with Public Works. So again, it's, it's that conversation we had earlier of how many times is Public Works doing the work of other departments because and then what does that then mean they are unable to do? And so one thing, as I'm kind of going into this budget process as we're discussing, is we need to strip out some of these things to get the maximum out of guys, you know, our 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 crew that has a CDL license shouldn't be making dump runs if if we have a need for a road to be rebuilt, you know? And so that's, that's part of this.
On the other hand, I don't think our certified harbor master should be making a dump run either, but.
Right, right, it could be the park attendant.
In the summer, yeah.
Right, it could be the park attendant. It could be, you know, the sister harbor master. I mean, there's.
Some other allocation.
There's different ways to, yeah, get there. And, you know, that was part of the issue with the mowing, to have the harbor master, the fire chief mowing. We got some comments about that, you know, and gotta do what you gotta do, but on the other hand, we can, we find a better way to use their time. I'd like to hope you can, so.
Is she submitting for mileage or anything now?
No.
She gets a mileage, Terry?
Right, right.
Did you say she gets a mileage?
How much we talking? Out of curiosity.
I don't know, off the top of my head.
All right, moving ahead, lime kilns. Now, this number, I think, did not account for the number Edward had put in, had given Legacy Rockport. I think this is the four he had put together estimate. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I I don't think it's.
I think it's in the ballpark though.
It's in the ballpark, yeah, yeah. So it, the the very short version of this is, there is work that the the, while the bricks were repointed, um, some of them, and you can, if you get real close to number two, you can see those issues, those, um, where he has, uh, where he had worked. It was really just icing on the cake. Um, there's more work to be done. And it involves removing vegetation, putting a roof on the lime kiln, um, you know, and then repointing. There are some voids in there that are significant, um, but again, citing the work of, you know, the the study, the rocks aren't moving, so as long as we can fill with with the mortar, his belief was that we were in a good position. Uh, but this is a longer-term project, certainly, and and I think it's also something, again, I don't mean to bring up funding, but it's something where grants could be available that could greatly help us to to meet this need.
And we will be getting his final report with a real number cuz there were some stopping off places where you could just deal with the vegetation and a roof and really sort of stop any further concerns, and then, of course, you could do more.
And there's more, and more. Any thoughts on the lime kilns? Mobile assessor. I expect you'll see something else next year, um, and you may actually see something in the budget, um, related to this, but um, also dealing with with building codes. Effectively, what we're trying to do is to make our our office more portable. So effectively what happens now when assessor goes out to your house, you build a new house, you know, assessor comes out, he's got, he writes, you know, down on his pad, Kerry's got everything written down, takes all his data, goes back to the office and puts it into the the uh, the camera system. Well, you know, if he had something like this and had an app on his, on his tablet that he could do all of that, it's integrated. He's on, he's in the field, he's taking the pictures, he's got the measurements right in front of him. Those are the types of things that I'd like to see us do more of. And this is something that that Kerry has been working on for years. This isn't anything new. But it allows us to be in the field and put, do the work once, rather than do the work twice or three times. Um, it's all, it's, you know, it's cloud-based, so you're, you know, you're anywhere in the world and you're into this system. Um, as opposed to, I now I need to go back to the office to put it in. That's all gone. The other thing this thing did, which I thought was pretty interesting, so let's say he's at a house and he says, I thi- is it a five or is it a graded five or is it a graded six? Let me look up, show me all the fives in this neighborhood. Okay, yep, yep, okay, now show me all the sixes, okay? Okay, yeah, it's a six. Okay, yeah, it's a six. So instead of trying to figure out, and it allows for more accurate read on grading of, of different properties. These are all, it's all information that's available, but you just need the tools available to do it, so.
Just the total cost or our share?
Total cost.
I mean, with Camden?
Oh, Camden, oh, 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 you're saying whether or not the share.
I mean, you're, we're sharing a resource, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
So, so what, I'm sorry.
This is our share.
It's our part, but, but we'll, but we'll work with Camden, you know, they, obviously have the same system, you know. There is another system that we're working on to discuss planning codes, but that's not ready for prime time, but same sort of concept.
So the system actually costs, costs twenty-six-three, and we're splitting it.
Thirty, right, so thirteen or fourteen, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next up, painting. Did I, did I skip one?
No.
In the green room. I don't think much more needs to be said about this. Any other thoughts?
Other than that, is that really a capital improvement?
The cost covers, so the, the threshold from GFOA is seventy-five hundred?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, okay. So basically, all the costs over five thousand, to at least be consistent, have to be covered in the capital plan. Now, I know what you're saying. Is it maintenance of the building? Yes. But in terms of what the, the high priest of the government financial, finance officers, they would, they would wear, you know, they would say it is, so. For our, we just won't tell them we don't consider it to be, but at least on the list, they'll be happy, so. And then the same, same is true of the, the interior of the auditorium upstairs. This is a little more than, than the green room. But you can imagine, and I don't know how often any of you have been upstairs, it's probably been some time since we haven't had a town meeting in two years. But it's tired up there, very tired.
And that all again goes to what Megan was saying. If it's an appealing space, we can rent it out and make some money.
All right, let's, parking library. You don't wanna talk about the library, hey?
You don't have any questions, Dave?
No. I only work for a lot of years telling them. Luke's standing out there measuring and counting how far it is. We have one less parking spot than we started with before we did the renovations. No, I don't have anything to say about that. Nope.
No comments.
Okay.
Except I told you so.
Calm down, Helen.
I think somebody else would push for that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, a few other people, yes. Better late than ever.
Anything on that?
Where would they be?
Uh, where would they be?
Where they were supposed to be in the first place, where they put in the granite curb against all recommendations, because they were told they were gonna have to take it right back out again.
What times the library shut down, and I'm assuming people use that parking for dining and other things too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think, I've had a meeting here where I didn't park there.
Right, I mean, it's kinda like.
It's town parking.
Softens the blow a little bit. If you think about, you know, how far we get a drive around just to park here for this meeting, right? And if you wanna go to dinner downtown.
The other thing is they have not put up a sign that says that the space right in front of the library is fifteen minute drop off zone. So sometimes you get three cars sitting there.
Yes.
Pointed out and blocking the road.
That was one thing, yeah. And they've done the, the sideways kind of parking, at a diagonal along, I've seen that too, on that, in that area too. We did have a shortage of, of striping this year. I don't know if, you know, if anyone's familiar with that, but basically the, I won't go into the details, but anyway, we, we have striping paint, so I would expect different striping as we go ahead here.
Well, that means I can take my stuff back to the, return to the hardware.
There you go.
I, I guess before we go on, the hesitation of not wanting to do too much on the library, six spaces doesn't really solve the problem that was identified through all that to begin with. Obviously, it's a problem. It was a known problem. And is there any option for continued fundraising? I don't know what the library groups that did much of that fundraising are doing, but is there any way of encouraging them to continue doing some fundraising to pick up some of these library issues, and that would be my same comment on the solar panels.
I think the solar panels are possible. I don't think there'll be an appetite for parking spaces.
I'm just saying it'd be nice to encourage the people who really, really were gung ho about this, since those were known issues, well, maybe not solar panels, but if they could at all be encouraged to just continue to fundraise, that would ease at least some of the burden that the town has had to take on that continues in every single budget.
Good, good suggestion, and, and those folks seem to have a high success rate when you, when you ask, when you, when you tell them the need, so.
Yeah. Well, money was in the budget to start with, and then the, huh, budget, those guys took it out.
The select board took it out.
I, I'd just like to see the money donated rather than come out of the Rockport budget, if that's at all possible.
Understandable, sure, sure.
Well, if you have naming all the building, you could have a named spot.
If the parking is guaranteed for the library, that's.
That, it's, it's tricky. I don't.
Right.
All right. Anyone, anyone else on the, on the parking for the library? Quiet issue, okay. Public safety building expansion. Okay, so this is obviously not free. So the feeling is we need to look at all of our buildings and not after they've become too far gone. The point is that we need to look at all of our, all of our structures. Town office is also on here as well. In two thousand six, the two thousand six, we did a public safety building expansion, oh, five, six, seven, somewhere in that ballpark, right? The town put on a, an expansion off the back. Also, we did the police apartment area. This is kind of off memory here, so, but added some room. But the needs are changing. We are, as, as, we'll talk about West Rockport Fire Station in a minute here. But the, the needs are changing of what we provide for services, and we need to look at all of those needs. Our fire, our, our fire department, obviously, is, we've got a lot of volunteers. We also are gonna enter a world where what happens with EMS, I don't know the answer. You ask me, I don't know the answer to that question. We have members of the fire department here. I'm not sure they know the answer to that question. We all want the same thing, which is to serve our residents better. But how we do that needs, that needs to be a conversation, and that's really what this is, is about starting a conversation. So looking at those items, looking at how do we cover, how do we have our police, our police cruisers undercover? So that way, they don't have to have the police cruisers running all night long with the, with the heat going and the, and the, and the wipers moving. So that way, when they need to get out, get out of the office to respond to a call, they can go. Because they're not undercover, our cruisers are running. Is that the best way to be doing this? Probably not. We have limitations on the site there in terms of where the building sits as opposed to the layout of the lot. I don't, I don't, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know where those needs, how we would need those needs, but they exist. And the other part that is part of being a twenty-twenty-one municipality is we have, we have officers of, of more than one gender now. So we need locker rooms. We need, we need showers to account for those facilities. And so that's part of growing and changing. And so we probably weren't thinking about that in two thousand five, six. But we are, you know, that's, that's obviously a very present need now, so. Is it a lot better than the police station was in two thousand five? You better believe it. Was it a lot better than it was in nineteen ninety-five? Absolutely. But we're here now, so. Any thoughts on, on this?
Yeah, why doesn't have to, I'm just curious, why does that have to be just all one chunk for all inclusive items that's listed up there? For example, if you're concerned about your cruise of winter time and saving the cost as between running, why not just build a garage?
Yeah.
Because garages are not that expensive. I am close to seven fifty, so.
Yeah.
Nice to see that breakdown, see what's absolute. I mean, especially with a diverse group now, you know, changing showers, those are, that's separate from the garage, right? So my suggestion is break that, break it down, and maybe, you know, it says twenty-twenty-six, but who knows?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, certainly the needs, the, the, the changing rooms and those needs are immediate. And, and there's different ways to get there. Is it, of course, if we were to try to, if we were to try to call contractor, it may be till twenty-twenty-six till we get them at this point too. But I, yeah. Yeah. Can you do tomorrow?
Later than that.
It's a good point though, but, yeah, thank you. And again, this is, this is the starting point of the conversation. That's really the point of this and the town office. Yeah, yeah.
Just be a men's and women's room there. What was the town office, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So I, I don't know that this is the forum for debate, but I just have to, I feel like I just have to say this out loud, that we're talking about building a brand new fi- fire station. And, and I understand the need for that. We're talking about expanding the public safety building that we currently have on two ends of a very relatively small town. And we also have other needs such as storage needs and other, other pressure on, on meeting space. And I, and I can't help but think that we're doing this very inefficiently. And smarter people than I have been working on this a lot longer than I have, but I just don't understand why we're actually expanding and building. I keep coming back to it, this is probably a terrible idea, but just, just, don't, don't think of the location so much as just the idea, like, why wouldn't we put a brand new, beautiful, public safety building at RES with parks around it in one place that's central, rather than have to have two places?
Too big that the, the effect on the insurance, the homeowner in the town will go up.
If you have a fire truck at the RES site? Fire trucks at the RES site to reach West, West Rockport, is that the issue?
That might not be, that might not be the right location, but I.
And we talked about a central fire station.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's an insurance issue to the, to the landowners.
I just gotta imagine that there are bigger communities than ours, a single public.
And maybe somebody needs to do, do the numbers on that, but that's, that's one of the issues.
Well, and, and, you know, I'd pay more on, on insurance if it means I can pay less on. You know, I want my place to be safe and, and, and I want everyone to be safe. I just think, I, I guess I shouldn't have given the location, a potential location, because that could take the whole conversation. The whole conversation is, can we look at this holistically and say, we, we have a, a, a town office that's too small, doesn't have stores, not enough meeting space, not enough office space. We have a public safety building that we're, we've already kind of sold ourselves on building a new fire department, and now we're starting to sell ourselves on building a new public safety addition.
And then we have an underused opera house.
And we have eight hundred thousand dollars in, in paving to stay woefully behind. I'm, I'm having a hard time right now.
You're not on, you're, you're not alone in the concept. That's what I was scribbling here, was my num, the numbers is based on all of what you just said.
Yeah.
I, I've mentioned it a couple of times, so you're not alone in that thought process.
I just wanna be smart with our money and, and, and I, and, and maybe we are, but I think it's a moment to pause and reassess before we jump in again. And spend more money.
I agree. Yeah.
I'd like to join the fight if I'm willing to use some more people.
Well, I wouldn't be able to show up. That's the problem.
That's what the ambulance service.
Right? Well, and I think that's another actually great point, is we also should kind of understand what's happening with the ambulance before we actually commit to, because we might actually need space for that. I don't know.
I, yeah, I've calculated that in.
And, and just to be clear, I mean, the, I, we're not spending, we won't walk out of here writing checks, so we're, obviously, there's a long way to go in that conversation. What, what you raised, Jeff, is not lost on me, that idea of there are, there is overlap in some cases. It, it may not be as great, but, you know, Alan's point is that five mile issue of having five miles between you and, as a homeowner and a fire station is important for your insurance. And so that's, that's driving a lot of our needs in West Rockport, and also ties in with our, our neighbors in, in Hope and Warren as well, so.
It, it's more important than just insurance. It also could mean saving your, your house or not saving your house that distance. I absolutely get that, and I don't wanna be dumped at that. I actually really believe in public safety. I just, let's pause and look and make sure that we're actually doing this, so.
Yeah, and what that process looks like.
They look at them individually, but when you look at all those needs, maybe there's no way of getting a centralized building or combining any of them, but I'm glad that people are thinking about it and asking the questions.
Okay, let's go small scale here. Again, moving ahead, we'll talk about radar. Again, five thousand dollars. Eric and I have talked about this. I know how he feels. This is not, it's, yeah, but GFOA doesn't agree with Eric, so we're just gonna keep it amongst us that. But, but again, this is, again, it's about useful life of what we're currently using.
Is shared with Camden too?
Um, is this what's shared?
No.
Oh, I think we're on our own, yeah. Any other thoughts? No one wants to get picked up. Good idea, okay. All right, shore power on A float. This is about adding power. Again, same idea, with so many people coming in, their need for services is increasing. We do, we do have a higher cost for those who have access to power, so we're, it's not at everyone's level. But those are, obviously, we put this in, we need to look at, does it make sense financially? Are we making that money back, or are we, you know, what's our, what's our payback window? How many years would it take for us to make back what we're putting into power on, on that flow?
But putting the power and also encourages those larger boats to come in, which get a higher fee.
Right, right, right. And there is, there is also, and there is, this is something the harbor committee has talked about, is how many of those big boats do we want?
Right.
Does it change the character of who we are? So those, those are, I mean.
It's a balance.
It's a balance, right? And, and that's, there, I think, thankfully, they're looking at those issues for us, but just in terms of needs, putting power on A float is, is, is awkward. Any other thoughts on that? Let's go to solar panels.
Talk about cruise ships in five years.
Once we dredge the harbor.
Get a Princess cruise line in there?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Solar panels on the library. Any thoughts, any, any extra pieces we wanna add to this?
Are there grants or something available? Because the, the economics are questionable at this.
Isn't it more beneficial to tie into a community solar project rather than spending the money upfront? When you get the credits back? I think you would have to weigh the balance between the two. I mean, we're building one here in town. It's gonna go online at some point. And there is, is some pushback on those as compared to large ones, but I think comparably speaking, if we're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars, is it worth it instead of just getting a credit back from tying, saying we're buying our power from solar when it's available? I don't know.
So, so nonprofits will work with investors who will benefit from the, from the, the tax, they'll, they'll get tax benefits. So is, is that allowed for a municipality to actually?
That's what we did with the, the town office, solar panels.
It is. So you can get someone else to put it in on their dime. They get the tax credits. You get, you get to buy the electricity at a certain point you bought out of it. You can either buy the stuff or whatever. There are organizations, I know, I, I don't, I don't know all the, all the folks, like Revision, for example, will actually navigate that process for you.
Exactly.
And I'm sure the others are supporting.
You can sell your tax credit.
You're selling your tax credit, straight.
There's a market for it.
On our, on the tax, on the panel, two, okay, two hundred.
Let someone else pay for it. And, and I don't know what the motivation is, if it's meant to cut costs or if it's about trying to go green, and so you, you sell your tax credits to someone and let them pay for it, and you're still going green, and you're not paying for it, so.
Any other thoughts on solar panels? Spotlight. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Do we not have any now?
Could you explain this?
Trying to remember a show with a.
Explain this one?
Is this for what?
For the opera house.
You know, you should wear.
The Muppet Show.
Uh, up at the balcony for performances on stage.
To spotlight one particular performer and follow them around.
When you have your one-man show, Alan.
Sounds like a donation.
You're the guy. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and that's the, that's the thing about this, right? This is about our, the town's needs, but that doesn't mean the town's paying, right? It may need to pay, but that's, the idea is to get everything on the list. This is the wish list in some cases. Maybe more than a wish, but an absolute need. All right, any other thoughts on spotlights? Moving on to tasers.
That charge out of this one, huh?
Yeah.
I don't want both. Spotlight.
Memtaser.
These are related, actually.
We're getting punchy.
It does sort of sound like there needs to be a town event, an auction, and so people can buy shares and do raffle tickets and have your name on any of these things, because some of these are right in the range for which.
Uh, you're Camden.
Oh, a taser.
Have your name on a taser.
I, I've thought of that, I agree with you, do an auction, si- either silent or regular auction and auction off bricks in front of the opera aisles or whatever and the library to raise money.
Or balcony seats.
Or balcony seats or benches or whatever we need.
Yeah.
The, the schools have done that very successfully, sold seats to go in their auditoriums, so.
Absolutely.
I thought we were on tasers.
Put your name on a taser.
She was gonna suggest that we buy tickets to taze each other, right?
You can have your name on one of the tasers.
Right, yeah, or, or you can pick out who you're gonna shoot with.
So, uh, how about town office building expansion?
Oh, my goodness.
I do this to come back to more test when we did the.
So I'm in twenty-five years, guys.
We had a basement, walkout basement in the original plan.
Yeah.
For the town office to do voting and, but you had to have two stairways and an elevator. And the people on the committee didn't wanna spend money on an elevator. So we lost all that space that could have been utilized in the future years. But now, now we've lost our option, you gotta go to a full addition. A million bucks, probably, yeah, right.
This would be out towards Route One?
Huh?
It would be extended out towards Route One.
Anything we should say?
Out towards Route One.
Yeah, out the, out the back of the, uh.
Richardson.
Richardson Room. That was the trade-off for the basement, was the Richardson Room to use as storage.
And now we vote there and we, then we, you know, it's, yeah.
Meet there.
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I, I will tell you, I'm like this close from having to move staff into that space right now. Um, we have, we have an issue with our AC unit that's failing. Um, and it rains on one of our employees whenever, um, the AC unit effectively is working. Uh, our fire chief rigged up, uh, what I consider, uh, it's kind of a water feature of the office, to capture the water coming off of, uh, the AC unit and into a, a garbage pail. Um, but that's what we're doing to get by. Uh, it's about a fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollar repair to the AC to replace what we have. Um, that's not this, but there, there are things that we need to consider and talk about holistic approaches, thinking about the bigger picture. So if we move an employee into the Richardson Room, where do we vote? What do we do with, you know, that space? Um, now all of our meetings are here, which may be good, maybe more use for this building, but there are certain challenges to that. So, again, um, this is about a, a conversation point, but I would fully expect that you will have more information in your, in, in the, in the next budget that will address either a study to, to deal with the space needs or more. So we're, um, we are packed to the gills. And I'll give Linda and, and the, and the clerk's crew a lot of credit. They just went through the whole vault, threw out a whole bunch of stuff. And I'll tell you, it still looks packed to me. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable. They've, they've done what they can to winnow out. We're trying to do more paperless options. Um, that's what part of our, our planning codes work is trying to limit the amount of paper you need, but just, just so much paper you need to, to process building permits. And, uh, so this is, this is, this conversation will go on.
Plus your vaults are overflowing.
Right.
And as to, they're using the one in the fire station?
We still have things over there, yeah, yeah.
The one in the basement of the fire station from when it was the town office.
Yeah. So, any of that? Any other thoughts on this? We've kinda talked about it with the public safety building, but. Okay, West Rockport Fire Station. Um, so this is somewhat in process, just to get you all caught up. But the voters approved moving forward to allow engineering and, and architectural work to be, to begin on the, on the, um, a new station. Um, there's, there's a committee that's, see, you're on it, are you on it? No, Mark.
Mark's on it.
Alan, you're on it. Um, I'm not sure if anybody else here is with that group, but, uh, they've been, Clay, you want, you want that? No, you're walking down. So they, anyway, they've been meeting for some time and, and to put together a package. Now the actual, the next public process, I think, is involving with the, the planning board to somewhat get approval of, of the design. There is some work that has to go into, there's some issues with the lot and two lots are there and we have to get that worked out. But, uh, this process would begin, the earliest, I think, we're looking at a potential vote on this would be, uh, the spring of twenty twenty-three. So there is a great deal of time for some of these issues that we're talking about here to work themselves out. And hopefully there's definition as to what the future of a lot of these questions are. Fire EMS, regional, not regional, Northeast Mobile Health, how does it all fit? Um, hopefully some of those, those questions that we're talking about have, have been resolved. But even at the end of the day, the shape and condition of the existing building is awful. Um, I had no idea it was that bad. Uh, I don't know, you know, it's, it's, yeah, it's pretty rough. And so something has to be done there and has to be done fairly swiftly. Um, so, you know, whether, you know, whatever that looks like, I don't know, but, but clearly we're, we're in, in a significant need in that building, so. Is there anything else you wanted to add that, Alan?
Well, existed, the newer truck engine twenty-three is, has only about four inches of space between the front and the back wall. Um, it was, it was, was customized to fit into the building at an additional cost when we bought it.
So we had to pay more, had to pay more to have a smaller truck.
You had to pay more to get a smaller truck, that's right, that's, that's right, yeah. Yeah, and you can't, you can't back in, close the door and, and the lieutenant or who's ever sitting on the other side, we have to climb up and over the truck to, uh, get out. So we have to, can't close the door until everybody on the right side gets out of the truck.
Building's a wreck.
It's a wreck. You wouldn't wanna live downstairs.
I mean, water service alone is a joke in that building. Can't even get water in the fire station, that's a, that's a problem, that's a problem. Okay, so we are through that end of the list. Um, there, moving on from here, we're talking about reserve accounts. It's nine o'clock, um.
It's eight o'clock.
It's three to eight o'clock, sorry. We, we still need Mark to change that clock up there, you're right. Um, but I think we can move a little bit, maybe quickly through these, some of these, cause they're, they're pretty specific to their, their purpose. Um, brick repointing. Um, this is, uh, obviously the library, this is establishing a reserve for brick repointing. So this is the other end of the roads conversation, right? This is when you start talking about putting ahead before you have the need. Um, and I know that we have, um, funding reserve accounts has not been something that the town of Rockport has done a lot of, of late. But I, I will say that in, in some instances, these are, these are absolute necessities. Um, when to start a, a repointing reserve for a, a new building is, is difficult, because certainly we, as we just talked about, nobody wants to talk about the library. Nobody wants to talk about putting more money into that building and I, and I, I hear that. However, the cost, when you get to the point where you have to do this, becomes exorbitant and then you get behind. So thus, you create a reserve, um, when it's a little less. Um, so fifteen years, we would need to do this.
Can I ask a question in general, um, because I'm relatively new to this, well, I guess not, two or three years, but a lot of these seem to be, um, the same reserves that were set up. Are there, and I didn't get a chance to pull out last year's. Are they all the same reserve accounts or are there new ones in there? Cause they mostly.
Libraries, right?
I think they're, the library was in there last year, it just never got funded. I think they're all, for the most part, the same.
Okay, I, I mean, I just wanted to point out that it looks very, I don't see anything new from what we discussed on the reserves last year. Um, and then I know that last year's conversation, the question was, why do we have library brick repointing, but it's not the only brick building in town?
And I'd, and I, and I would say that the, the town office is in need of some careful look at probably the brick on that building. So, um, yeah, I, I think that's absolutely something that needs to be, uh, kept in mind.
I think the only reserve account that's different this year is the Public Works Equipment Reserve. And the reason that is there now is that we have, uh, developed a fifteen-year plan to replace their equipment, which stabilizes the investment in their equipment, whether it puts money into a reserve or it takes money out. So that's the only one that's changed.
Thank, thank you.
Do you wanna take them en masse at once then, as a result? Because that'd be the only, the only change? Any thoughts in terms of reserves? So just to run down the list, we're talking about computer replacement, um, second elevator, library, fire hose, harbor floats, uh, harbor pilings, um, HVAC for the library, uh, the roads, obviously. Roof reserve for the library, SCBA, sidewalks, that's how I brought up, the boat for the harbor master, Andre, tennis courts, C-wall reinforcement, the palmarium, uh, fireworks building, revale now.
Yep.
I don't want to, if I'm going too fast, or if you wanna go through, maybe, maybe we'll just, are there any in that list that we wanna discuss?
But I need to look them over three carefully, like mostly the last year.
I would add, in terms of changes, um, the basketball and tennis courts, some of you may have seen that there's been kind of a renewed effort to get the Marge Jones field back up to playable conditions. Um, Chief, Chief Peaslee has been working on that quite diligently. We've got, we received a number of donations from businesses and, and, um, you know, individuals and residents and, and parents. Uh, and they've been really generous to try to spruce up some of these areas. Um, you know, the replacement of sheds and the like. They're under five thousand, so they're not on this list. But, but those are items that, that have been really there since we built the field twenty-five plus years ago. Uh, and, um, they needed it, they needed the TLC. Um, so, uh, the one piece, the largest piece of the, that rec field that didn't get touched is the basketball and tennis court resurfacing. And that's something that, for obvious reasons, that those costs are, are a little bit larger than someone can, can write a quick check for. However, um, you know, there are some grant funds that, that Chief's looking at and so we're pursuing those as well. But, um, and there are some groups that are willing to contribute to the basketball side.
One of the con, one of the lines of conversation we had about Marge Jones in the past was recognizing that it's, it's a park that's being used by lots of municipalities. And, uh, I think we all agree that it was probably unlikely that it would, uh, have a positive outcome, but the thought was reach out to some of the other municipalities and say, you're, you're sending your kids here.
Yeah.
And this is on our backs, uh, can, can you help out a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, you know, if, I think that part of the issue there is somewhat related to roads. Um, that was a situation, that has been a situation where we had a number of residents who had been willing to donate their time to, to try to keep up the, you know, and they're raking. Well, some do, some don't, they do it the wrong way, they do it this way. As a result, you're left with a mess at the end of it. And so there's a bit of a reset that has to be, we have to re-cut the infield, we have to, you know, reset the fencing. Uh, but the idea is that once we get through that, we'll be able to reduce the amount that we're doing annually in terms of costs and upkeep. But then two, the individual groups that are participating there, so your live, your little leagues, your Penn-based soccers, uh, they've all been approached and, and offering that we need to help out us to, to, for them to provide their, their programs on our field. And, and that, those conversations have gone really well. Some of them, some of their members have even joined, uh, on the rec committee. So, you know, they really are all in to make this work, which is nice. All right, moving ahead, uh, we talked, I think, we talked about the Public Works Building. Raval.
So sidewalks, did we?
Oh, yeah.
We had quite a chunk of money in the, um, bond for sidewalks.
Yep.
Is that getting spent on sidewalks or did it all get used up on pavement?
Uh, almost all of, so we have currently, uh, once the pier is completed, um, we'll have, we won't have enough money to complete the Main Street sidewalk project, which was part of that bond.
Right.
Um, so there's some tough choices as to what do you do? Um, unfortunately, the Rockland Road project was more expensive than we anticipated. And it's almost complete, but not quite. Uh, so there's some questions that we need to figure out in terms of how do we, how do we deal with that? Um, I had a great chat with Jeff Scott. Um, he pr- he provided me with that list that, that Pathways had worked on. How long ago was that, Alan, maybe three years?
You mean, well, there was.
A lot ago?
There's a two thousand thirteen, and then we were doing the survey. And the Main Street sidewalk was promised to us by Steve Beveridge. Ten years ago?
Yeah.
And right now, I don't think most people in town even realize that there is a designated walking area there. I won't call it a sidewalk.
I won't either, and it's very scary to be on that.
It's extremely dangerous.
It's, and shattered and.
And, and we have a good plan. I, I would say that, I don't, if, the, the plan that Gartley has drawn up is, is very good. It deals with some water issues we have along there. I mean, there's, there's a lot of concerns coming off that side and, and trying to channel it the right way. But it was, it's gonna cost more than what we have. So do we put some money aside in the budget and, and save that, the infrastructure bond money and put it towards this? Are there other needs?
Is it granite?
Uh, yes, I think this is.
Yes, concrete and granite, it goes up the summer street.
So if it was asphalt, I know that's like heresy, but if it just got you up off the street.
With main media coming back, I don't know how many of their people are gonna be walking back and forth. That was the always issues, because they would walk facing the traffic, but in fact, there is a sidewalk on the other side. Um, I said, most people probably don't even realize it is a walking area.
Yeah.
Designated walking area.
Well, that's for others to talk about, but I, I. I like the nice granite concrete sidewalks, but I like a sidewalk even better.
Yeah.
So if asphalt's what we can afford.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Any other thoughts on sidewalks? We talked about Andre, C-wall, palmarium. We talked about Andre, Seawall Palmarium, revaluation is a new one. Um, so Kerry or assessors agent, if you're like, met with the select board at their last meeting. He, uh, is going to engage to, with a, a firm to provide a statistical update to our values. As some of you may, all of you know, um, values have gone up over the last three years. And as a result, um, that causes issues with our, our current value, uh, town valuation versus our state valuation. It causes inequities in our system and these are inequities that we have to resolve. Um, we're really forced to do so. So the select board discussed that with him. He's going to move ahead with that pro, project this winter. I would expect this summer, there will be letters that, or this spring, I should say, and this summer, there will be letters that will go out to all of us to let us know that there will be statistical updates and our values will change, which then will mean our proportion of, uh, of the whole may change, um, which also would impact our mill rate. Um, but that's, again, that's not necessarily the same thing. So that's happening at the same time. There's a need for us to establish a full townwide revaluation where we have people in the field knocking on doors, meeting with residents, going through homes to update our, our knowledge base. We haven't had a full scale revaluation since two thousand and five. And that, while we can have great staff that are engaged on the building permits and out in the field, until you have that comprehensive look at everything and look at all of it, all at once, you're not really able to have that clear, unadulterated picture of where, where all the properties stand on the level at the same time. So this, uh, what we're calling with, to do so, uh, it's a hundred and sixty thousand. And the idea would be funded over a, a four-year period. Which would mean it would, it would start in twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven. The challenge is, can we wait that long? That's the other piece of this, because as you all, while the statistical update will get us to a point that's acceptable, if the current trends hold and if this isn't a bubble that bursts and then we, the, the, the values kind of fall back into a, a more of a, a more normal pattern, uh, we're going to be back in this area very soon. The further we go without that revaluation, the further challenges we face. As somebody who was on the board when that happened, that oh-five revaluation happened, it was not a pretty sight in this town. And so it's trying to head, stay ahead of these values is so critical. And so whatever we can do, it's, it's important for our town to do so.
And it has a larger impact too, because it affects what we get in revenue sharing. It affects what you get as a homestead exemption, as a primary homeowner in the state. It affects any, essentially any reimbursement that we get from the state that's based on our valuation. If our valuation is not certified at a hundred percent, we're not going to get a hundred percent of that revenue back.
And it's currently not.
Right.
So we're already leaving some money on the table with the state, so we've not.
Yeah, Helen.
Uh, I presume this means Kerry is going to have to hire some more people to help him. Is that part of the cost?
Yeah, we'd hire someone else to come in.
Oh, okay.
We wouldn't be hiring Kerry.
I think we had a, we had a different person the last time, didn't we? Or somebody outside coming in? I, I don't.
The, the one at oh-five, two thousand and five? Yeah, we had Vision. I mean, we, originally the assessor's agent did, did the, his own reval. And then that was, you know, everything blew up. And then we hired Vision to come in and they conducted the revaluation. Yeah. It was a whole staff of people and, yeah.
But Kerry would be overall sort of managing, directing?
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting piece because in a way you're giving, it's like some, you're, you've somewhat farmed out your own job to someone else.
Yeah.
But the, the way I look is, yeah, they manage that project effectively. I mean, it's someone else's values, it's someone else's take. But they always need the local knowledge and the more help that they get, because you have somebody who's not from here. It's probably a crew from Massachusetts or Connecticut, right? Who do they know? Well, Rockport, so they can use all the help they can get. All right, moving on. Walker Park, playground equipment.
I think this is another opportunity for a group fundraising effort.
Grant money.
Or grant money, yeah.
Sounds good.
Sure it's up to seventy thousand now?
But I, I guess I would, in terms of the need, um, as a member of the Parks Committee, I think when we've gone over and looked at it, we're actually pleasantly surprised that it is in pretty good condition. So I think, um, the merry-go-round, which is now gone and is, even the pedestal's going away, that was pretty rickety. But otherwise things are in pretty good shape, so we've.
Thought it was more of an ADA compliance issue.
Yeah, but, and that almost has more to do with how you get down to it rather than the equipment. But the, so it's not to say we shouldn't do this and the Parks Committee is really working on grants and other opportunities, but we're not putting our kids at risk by a scary, rickety playground. It's, it's actually in pretty good, solid condition.
Has anybody talked to Cedar Works about possibly?
Yeah, we've got a, one of the Cedar Works guys is on the Parks Committee, working a lot with us.
He's actually working with me on the merry-go-round replacement right now, so.
Just near John's heart.
Listen, we've got a lot of memories on that.
Absolutely.
John Michelle can do the ribbon cutting on it.
All right, uh, diesel fuel holding tanks. Put a merry-go-round on that. Old salt shed, dent salt shed.
I thought that was in the budget some time ago. Am I just thinking of repairs?
We did some repairs to it to enclose it better and, uh, sustain its life a little bit longer, but it was not a long-term fix.
And the other, talking about the building, the Public Works Building, um, there is some work that's going to be needed there. I mean, that repair took place, but we have some issues. The wastewater building needs, you know, section needs to be redraft. That, talk about a comprehensive look, that's, that also is going to need more protection. Uh, the last thing on this end, recreation field expansion. This is, the idea is to create a new soccer field, turf field. Again, this is responding to needs. Again, the issue of RES is, 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 is here. And, you know, we had a good chat, um, with, uh, the, uh, the Budget Committee, uh, when we had our, our conversation about RES back in, what was it, September, Greg? Something like that. But even independent of that, um, you know, members of RES Committee, RES Task Force had just identified that the RES field is not a suitable site for the vast number of the types of play that we have, soccer, baseball, et cetera, lacrosse, field hockey. Uh, and the use of that site, um, is a challenge. It's certainly, we don't know the future of RES. So field expansion and, and the use of turf potentially to do so, um, is something to be considered and discussed. Where does the school fit in? Where are the schools' needs? Um, I don't know. Um, we're going, we've set up, we're going to set up meetings this winter to talk, um, Chief Peaslee and I to, to speak with the superintendent uh, about what their future is and perhaps there is some dual needs there. They've started, since we've started working on this, they've announced they're going to have a committee that's looking at a replacement of their fields to install a turf field. That may solve some problems, uh, but it doesn't resolve the issue of if we remove some use of RES, where do those kids go? Uh, because there is a bit of a, a, of a, you know, and I'm not trying to get in the middle of green space, non-green space. Um, this isn't about RES necessarily, but do we have enough field, enough fields to, to operate regionally, um, all these different programs that we put on? And, uh, the, the feeling of, I think, the rec committee is that we don't. And so what, what do we do? We have a twenty-five-year-old field. Do we have enough room? Is there expansion? Is there room for expansion there? Can we talk with the DOT? Can we talk with the school? That, the DOT conversation is one that everyone has brought up over the last twenty years. And every time they get the answer from the state is, no, 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 no. Well, I, maybe I'll be the fifth town manager to hear, hear no from the DOT commissioner, but hey, it doesn't hurt from trying. So there's a lot baked into this number, but, uh, that some of it is, is more applicable than not, but the, the recreation needs exist. And, and I mean, as you said, Jeff, everyone comes to Rockport to play. We also have a big number of kids from Rockport that are participating. But so the Penn Bay group that just won, um, their state championship, Greg's son was on that group. Congratulations, Tom. Um, they, uh, twenty-five percent of the kids in that program, and that program is regional. Twenty-five percent of those kids are Rockport kids. So, so that's, you know, kudos to the ones that win, but kudos to the ones that are participating. You know, uh, so we, you know, there's a, there's a recreation role. We don't have a recreation department. We don't pay an employee. We don't do any of that. What are we doing for the kids in this period? That was one thing I heard at the Parks Committee is, you know, what are we doing for the kids of the town? And so recreation is, is really the, the one thing that fits into that, in that banner, but we're trying to do more here. We're trying to do more everywhere. So anyway, that's, that's its own thing.
And the library is doing a lot.
The library, absolutely.
Library's doing, got some great programming for kids.
Absolutely. Any other thoughts, questions?
Have we looked at why we don't have a recreation department?
Uh, I have my own thoughts. You and I may have talked about a few of them. Uh, I mean, the, the value, the role of the Y is a big part of it, right? Uh, good and bad. But that's something that we've somewhat passed the Recreation Committee to look at. Uh, you know, what's, do we have the facilities that we need to put, put together what we have? Do we have the programming? Is there a way to unify all these different groups that put on, you know, Little League, everybody together? The way it works, everybody's kind of out for them. It sounds bad, but they're out, you know, baseball does baseball, flat town basketball does its thing. Is there a way to work together? None of the towns are really melding those groups together. Uh, but we're the place they all play, so maybe we, we have a, a role in that conversation. But it's to be continued for sure. Any other thoughts? The only thing we have left is the vehicle replacements schedules. Any thoughts or concerns about that long list of vehicles?
Are all of these vehicles leased? I had a hard time determining which ones are leased, which ones are owned.
Uh, we do a lease purchase agreement, so.
On all, everything?
So at the end of the lease, we purchase it for a dollar.
Well, I just want to say thank you to you and the department heads. And I mean, this is a lot of work and it's really helpful to see the big picture.
And while it's scary, at least we know what's out there, right?
The W does bear the W don't.
That's right.
That's, that's the idea. I'm not hiding anything.
Yeah, and it does allow us to sort of think of the use of our, our buildings, our public buildings. How can we maximize that?
And I, I appreciate you all going through this exercise, but this two and a half hours here to talk about this is not necessarily the way anyone wants to spend their, their Monday night, but I hope that this will be something that will pay dividends for us and maybe make our meetings shorter. In February and March, we're talking about budget, we're talking about town meeting, and as we talk about going forward, I hope that maybe we saved a little bit of time with the other, might stay a little bit longer now. So, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.